And welcome everyone on this snowy afternoon. Will the clerk please call attendance, the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Present.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Present.
Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
And myself, Ms. Bates, present.
And it looks like the Empire Select Board is here, as always. Thank you, everyone. The consent agenda to be read includes minutes to approve for December 7th, 2020, December 21, 2020, and December 28, 2020.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous, and the chair so declares. My chair's remarks will be brief, but I do want to... Oh, excuse me, the town manager's report is next.
Thanks. I'm happy to yield the floor.
Right ahead.
Thank you. So I did have a very brief printed report. In the packet, this past week, we've been focused on, as the board knows, trying to get as much information about what's happening with the vaccine rollout process as we possibly can, and then in turn communicating that to the community through a robocall, and as we were talking about before the meeting started, my brief turn on the news. I think just it's important for people to understand, the town does not get access to the vaccine doses directly from suppliers or manufacturers. We get them from the state on an application basis, and right now, the state is only granting 100 doses per week to Concord and to every other municipality. I've talked to easily a dozen managers in the region and beyond, and everyone is in the exact same boat. It's not that Concord wasn't fast enough or responsive enough. As far as I know, let me say this, every municipality that I'm aware of, and I've asked at the fire chief judge and others, we are all, everyone is, every town is getting 100 doses per week from DPH, period. So that's why we are starting to roll out, to the plan for, roll out some micro clinics that will be held at Harvey Wheeler, and we'll be getting it for seniors, just 75-plus people. And we will be working on rolling those out and getting information about the specific details of those, but we just ask for a little patience, because as the board knows, we were planning, we had been planning, and have completely planned and set up a mass vaccination clinic at the high school, just without the required vaccine doses. And so this is a total shift in our approach from where we were, and so that, it takes a little bit of doing to kind of change up both how we communicate and who's going to be doing the vaccinating and everything else. So, you know, I think the focus is going to be, you know, lining up the 100 doses a week that we're going to get, and trying to assist our over 75 population as best we can on navigating the labyrinthine website that you need to use to get an appointment through the state system. And again, that's not something we control, it's the options that we have in front of us. So I know our council and aging staff is working with their senior population. If you have been in the council and aging, and you go in and you check in through my senior center, and we have your contact information, you'll be hearing from them in the coming weeks as we are able to do more scheduling. If you haven't, you should reach out to them, you know, either by email or phone, you know, to try and get on that communication list. Again, this is really for seniors, right now, we're focused on 75 and older. And then for everyone, we have a pre-recorded information line that we are regularly updating as we get updates, and that is 978-318-3033. And so that's really a great place to get the most current information we have. As I said last week, the council and aging and the health department don't have additional information. We are sharing, you know, as soon as we have something new, we put it on the pre-recorded line. So we asked that you not call the council and aging and the health department, because they have other business that they do, and the calls, you know, are starting to overwhelm. We completely understand that people are nervous, and there's a lot of anxiety about how to get the vaccine, and people really want it because they want this to be over like we all do, but we're just, the biggest, the most important part of this, we don't have any control over. And that's, like I said in my call, that's as frustrating to me as it is to anybody else, but it's the situation we're in. And so I don't know if everybody had any questions about the vaccine.
So could I just ask you to repeat that number slowly?
Sure.
Okay.
It's 978-318-3033. And again, that is a pre-recorded message line that we update as soon as we have information. So if you have questions about things, and you want to know what the current status is, instead of calling the health department or the council and aging, call that number, and it'll be the most current information.
Jane.
Stephen, I know that you've already said this, but I just wanted to, I thought it was worthy of repeating, which is, the 100 doses per town per week has nothing to do with population, is my, I mean, that's just period. So this is how we're doing it.
I heard today, just to put that in stark perspective.
Right.
I heard today, Boston got 200 doses, the city of Boston. So, and again, we're all, we don't know what's happening, you know, we don't get information from the state, you know, or we are getting information from the state. They are saying, if you saw that same news piece, they did talk to the secretary of public health, and she said they had supply issues at the state level. Again, I don't know why that is, I just know that when we say we need vaccine, we get the 100 doses per week, which every other community gets. Again, I need to reinforce, this is not something that the town of Concord is laying up on, it's controlled by the state.
Right, I mean, I reached out to our federal representative, Representative Trahan, despite the fact that she's quarantining because she is COVID positive. And she had, you know, she was as frustrated with and for us as, and on behalf of the communities that she lives in, and all of her towns, as we are.
So, and again, I know it's stressful, I just, all we ask is that people be patient. We are doing everything we possibly can, and I think what people need to know is, if the federal policy changes, and we get 10,000 vaccine doses, we can put them in people's arms the next day. I mean, we are set up to do that, we just need the doses. So I, like I said, we are trying everything we can. We know this is the most important thing on our plates right now. So then the other thing is, we have a long-duration storm that's upon us now, people just look out their windows, they can see that. Town offices, we closed early today. I mean, town offices are close to the public anyway, but we, town staff, we're going to be, we've encouraged most people who can, you know, non-essential to work remotely. It's possible that there'll be that tomorrow as well, given the duration. And, you know, given the long duration, I know when it comes to clearing the commercial areas, that's something that people want to see done right away. It's the same crews that are going to be out for two and a half days on the roads, and so as soon as they get some rest time, they will be back out to clear snow from our commercial districts. So that may not be, it depends on when the storm ends, when that happens, but it's usually the day following the end of the event. So that's, it's just been, you know, storm prep and vaccines for the week. There's a couple, the Intersack Hill guardrail placement has been put on hold for the winter. And then I just want to touch on a positive thing. The CCHS Student Senate is working with our Economic Vitality Committee and Concord Together, and they're pairing student volunteers with businesses to give them some technical assistance, whether it's social media marketing, or helping build like a website, or something like that. So it's a great program, it's a great, I think the students are really into it, and it's going to definitely be a direct help to many businesses who just may, they may have the technological knowledge to do more online business, they just don't have the time, because they're trying to run their business. And so in hearing that feedback over and over, and I got to give Concord Together really props on this, they really took a concept and ran with it, and it's now working very well.
Okay, any other questions for the town manager? Jane?
I just wanted to add that I noted that the White Pond Forum.
Yes.
Scheduled for tomorrow has been postponed, not surprisingly, to allow for all of the attendees the ability to dig out and be present for a forum.
Yeah, I think, Jane, and thank you, that was late breaking news this afternoon, I appreciate the reminder on that. The big thing is, and everyone should be aware, as they talk about digging out, there are high winds on, in the middle and on the tail end of this storm. And the concern was, if we have this forum, and someone, a key presenter, loses power at their home or their office, or wherever they are, it would make it very difficult to continue to participate. So just err on the side of caution, we pushed it out a week.
Okay, Terry.
I'm glad you brought that up about the White Pond Forum. I try to look at the county calendar every few days, and I don't know, I guess I somehow missed it. Like, I didn't realize there was even going to be a White Pond Forum at all. So I just ask again that we have lots and lots of publicity, we really want people to participate in these forums. Thanks.
Okay.
Agreed.
Good, okay, very good. My chair's remarks are brief, I just, most of them have been covered by Stephen. I do want to underscore that we're certainly acutely aware of everyone's concern about the vaccination rollout, and particularly for our seniors, which is one of the reasons we've invited Susan Rask, our public health director, back here today to speak to some of this. The second thing I want to mention is, basically for the benefit of the select board members, but the public as well, and that is that Tammy Guevara's office has filed HB 273, which is for the additional alcohol liquor licenses, as well as HB 274. And that's for the senior means-tested tax exemption. So that's good news, because there's been a lot of back and forth on this for months, and making sure we're going to be covered. All right, and that concludes my brief remarks. The next item is the COVID-19 vaccine update and rollout challenges. We're so mindful of Susan Rask's time and attention to these issues, and it is of utmost concern. So we're welcome her back to give us the update. Susan. And I'm not seeing her here right now. So we'll postpone that item, perhaps she'll join us later. The next item is the review of the inholder license application by Best Western Hotel LLC, doing business as Best Western at historic Concord, located at 740 Elm Street. At our last select board meeting, the select board requested that the manager return before us and give some explanation for the lapse in the application for the license. So I see that Deepak Nonnen is here, would you please unmute and join us?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm one of the vice presidents for the company, my general manager, Samantha, is also here on this call. The company that owns and operates the hotel acquired it in 2016, and we made sure that every certificate that we needed was kept up-to-date and current. Unfortunately, we were not aware that there was an inholders license, there was a health certificate, a pool operation and health and safety certificate that was being renewed every year. Unfortunately, we were not aware that there was an inholders license, it wasn't passed on from the previous owners, and so forth. You know, that's the reason why it has lapsed, and when it was brought to our attention by Mr. Jeremy, you know, we were able to act on it immediately in a matter of 24 to 48 hours, and send out everything we needed. I think going forward, we know that that is one of the licenses that we need to be operational. You know, we were not aware of its requirements, I mean, you know, different towns, different counties, different districts, you know, they have different requirements, and we didn't know that for the town of Concord, there was an inholders license. But now we know it was just a lack of oversight as to, you know, what was handed over to us, and what we thought was required to stay in business.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Comments or questions from the select board? So let me say.
Yeah, I guess I just have one question, which I don't know if Mr. Ninen would know, but when was the last year that the hotel had an innkeeper's license?
I'm not aware of that, I think Jeremy said it was back in 2014, 2015. Something like that was the last time it was that there was, that the hotel had an inholders license. I'll have to go back to his email, you know, exactly, he did mention that to us. So it's been, it was well before, you know, maybe a year before we actually acquired it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think we're pleased to hear any other comments from the select board. Jeremy, did you want to make any additional comment? You don't need to, but.
Sure, I mean, we, like you said, we let them know that they needed to submit paperwork to be in compliance with their inholder license, and they turned it around within 24 hours. And then we got approval from the police department, fire department, building, and health department, as we do for these applications, and then brought it to the select board.
Okay, let me say that we appreciate the quick response from the manager and vice president as presented here today. However, there is a state statute that requires a fine for infractions when the license has not been approved. So I'm open to comments from the select board on that.
Linda?
Yes.
Is, what flexibility does the select board have in this matter? In terms of either, is it a fixed, did you say $100 a day or something like that?
$100.
Is it within our jurisdiction to amend that in any way, or waive it?
I'm not aware of that, it is a state regulation?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty clear, it's a $100 fine. It's not, what's less clear is $100 per year, or whatever, it just says, if there's a failure to do it, it's a $100 fine.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify then, it's not $100 per day?
No.
Or even $100 per year? It's $100, and it doesn't really specify any more than that, is that right?
That's how the statute reads?
That's correct.
So we don't even have any discretion, it sounds like it has to be $100, period.
It sounds like it would be, our discretion is where we would apply the $100. Would it be in total, or would it have application of something else? And I think, at least that's what I'm hearing.
I think under the circumstances, this is one incident of non-compliance. It's a very longstanding one, but it's, I think, still just one incident. So from my perspective, it does seem like a, you know, one application of the fine would be sufficient.
Okay.
I would agree, especially given the swiftness with which it was dealt with once notified. You know, clearly, there's been a lapse, period, but it has many, there are many input points on that lapse.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to authorize the select board, sorry, the town manager's office to issue a fine consistent with the statute as it reads.
Move that the select board instruct the town manager's office to issue a fine as described in the statute.
For the Best Western?
For the Best Western on Elm Street in Concord.
Okay, is there a second?
Wait.
Okay. Can I have a second first, and then we'll?
Yeah, second.
Okay, further discussion?
I was just going to suggest, Linda, that the motion should really, since the amount is since the amount is specified, I would have just suggested the motion should include the amount.
Okay, right.
All right, let me rephrase that. Move to authorize the select board to direct the town manager to issue a fine in the amount of $100, according to the state statute, for lapse license for the Best Western on Elm Street in Concord.
Thank you. Okay.
Second.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, so Mr. Ninen, thank you for your prompt response to discovering this situation and for coming before us today. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to issue the innkeeper's license?
We've already taken care of that, have we not?
So on the 11th, I believe it was, the select board did.
It was among the list, I didn't know.
Conditionally issue it if they appeared in front of the board today.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Moving on to the next item, which is the public hearing application for a new on-premises Section 12.1 in malt beverage annual license by RK Wing Corporation, doing business as Rosini's Pizzeria and Restaurant, located at 206 Fitchburg Turnpike. This is a continuation of the previous public hearing, which I'm now going to open, and again, I'm just going to ask for the clerk to call the roll to open the public hearing, even though it's a continuation.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, and I said it there. So I will remind everyone that this license application was continued for discussion today because of an infraction, originally, an infraction had occurred in early 2020, for which the premises was issued the fine, and was not allowed to renew their license for 2020. The select board requested that the town manager's office and the police department sit down with the management of Rosini's and review all the requirements for the license. And so I see that Chief O'Connor is here today, thank you for being here. And I believe Jeremy, it was Detective Harrington who did meet with the applicants, as well as Jeremy Romano from our select board office. So thank you both for doing that. I guess I would ask the applicants to first state what they consider their major responsibilities for any application renewal, approval that might be considered.
Oh, I'm Rafael, I'm the owner of RK Wing DBA as Rosini's Pizzeria. We.
Boris, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, myself, Jeremy, and Detective Harrington, we had a meeting on January 25th, and we went over some rules and regulations, hours, and yeah, and we are still seeking for the liquor license.
Okay, can you say a little bit more about what you understood to be the major responsibilities that you have going forward?
The major responsibility, it is like having a manager of records on premises, or in an alternate manager, which like on a pass, we kind of, you know, we didn't have like an alternate manager on the premises, and now we do the manager of records now, it should be with Celia, she's here 50 to 60 hours weekly. And as well, I have an alternate manager.
Okay, and what other kinds of responsibilities would you have if the select board decided to approve this license?
Well, we are we are going to be fully responsible for the liquor license and customers and and everything, and everyone who comes to Rosini's and drink, or so.
Okay. I guess I would first ask Jeremy if you would like to say a few words about when you met?
Sure, so as requested by the select board, Detective Harrington and myself met with Rafael, Celia, and Uziel, just to review the state and local license regulations in the event that the select board did issue the liquor license. And you know, there's nothing else really to report out from that meeting, aside from the fact that we met, and we reviewed the license, and they seemed to, you know, understand the requirements of the state and the town. And, you know, myself and town manager's office and police department are prepared to work with Rosini's and develop a good working relationship in the event that the select board does issue license. And that's what I would report from that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Chief, would you like to comment on this as well? You're on mute, yeah.
I apologize, Joseph O'Connor, Chief of Police. I spoke with Mr. Borges and facilitated the meeting with Detective Harrington and Jeremy, and they met. There's a memo in your packet from Detective Harrington that he went through the town's rules and regulations, as well as general laws related to the sale of liquor. He is confident that they understood those. And, you know, I did, you know, that was very concerning last year. I thought it was clear to me that they were told not to sell alcohol, and they did. And that's where I had taken my position on it, but after understanding that the board wanted the town and the police department to meet, they are, do, to the best of my understanding, understand their role in licensing officer will, as he does other establishments, check that should the license be issued.
Thank you, Chief. Comments or questions? Jane?
I noted in the memo that there were two sets of TIPS trainings that had expired, which I find a bit concerning, given that that's required for conducting business with a liquor license. And I don't know whether that's been rectified to date, but it's a it would indicate a lack of preparedness.
So would either Jeremy or the chief like to comment on that?
Sure, so I mean, it's my understanding that they have up to 30 days until after the issuance of the license in order to get up-to-date TIPS certifications, and myself and Detective Harrington would be following up on that, certainly, if the board did decide to issue the license.
Okay, thank you. I believe those expirations were for last year, when they were clearly not going to be able to have a liquor license for 2020. But a good question to raise. All right, any other comments or?
Linda?
Yes.
Following up on Jane's question, I'd like to ask the applicant, are you prepared to complete your TIPS training within the next 30 days? Will you be able? Will, will you be able to do that? And how will you do it?
Uh, yes, um, I already have one in handy, uh, that was done at this, oh, you have two? So we already have two that was done uh these uh last week, and we are working in another two to have uh to have be uh certified this week. So I should be uh sending uh Jeremy and a email and as well for uh Detective Harrington all those IDs and uh the certification chips, cards for
Within the next thirty days?
Yes, uh, I would say by the end of this week.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um So are there any questions, it looks like that completes the questions from the board, are there any additional questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, um, I would entertain a motion.
Move to close the public, public hearing. On the application for a new on premises section twelve wine and malt beverage annual license by RK Wing Corporation DBA Rosini's Pizza and Restaurant, Pizzeria and Restaurant located at two oh six Fitchburg Turnpike.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. So I now would entertain a motion um for the license, to approve license?
Move to approve the application for a new on premises section twelve wine and malt beverages annual license by RK Wing Corporation DBA Rosini's Pizzeria and Restaurant located at two oh six Fitchburg Turnpike.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous, and the chair so declares. Um, I would just like to comment uh to Mr. Borges um that um I think you fully understand the seriousness of this. We want you to be successful, uh, but it means paying close attention to all the requirements that you must meet and to work cooperatively with the police department and the um town manager's office on any issues that uh are raised. So we wish you well and um hope that you will do all of that.
Thank you very much, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hey, Linda?
Yes.
Um, before we move on the agenda, Susan Rask has joined us, if you want to go back to the other item.
Very good, thank you. Um, Susan, thanks for being with us, we know how busy you are. Um, we've previously in the town manager's report as well as a brief comment from the uh myself, um, comment on, on the anxiety that exists in the community that you're more than well aware of uh regarding the COVID vaccine rollout. And um the challenges just don't stop. So we thank you for being here with us today and giving the community an update, thank you.
There we go, sorry, now can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, I didn't um, I didn't really get the agenda or the meeting invitation, and I'm sorry I wasn't here when the meeting started. Uh, so we were notified last week. You know, we, we did the first responder clinic on January fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, then we're moving towards the second dose of that on February twelfth and thirteenth, and it was our understanding from DPH at that time that we were going to participate in further clinics and that other towns were standing up clinics and that vaccine would be available, and then we were told last Monday or Tuesday that the towns, all the towns are now only getting a hundred doses a week maximum, so we're trying to plan for clinics for the overage seventy-five population, which is the first population that's eligible in phase two, which we're moving into. Uh, so I've been working closely with Ginger Quarles and Lauren Beretta at the COA. We have a clinic tentatively scheduled for February tenth, or we can go out and do the Concord Housing Authority residents on February fifth. I ordered a hundred doses of vaccine today, they won't arrive until next Wednesday, the tenth. So um we can either do the housing authority or we can do the COA clinic, but we can't do both with the vaccine we have on hand. Um, and then I will order a hundred doses ongoing through February every week for clinics at the COA for a hundred people the following week.
Yeah, it's a tough situation to be in because how many residents over seventy-five? Uh, I think it's two thousand five hundred or something like that?
Close to that, yes. I did speak with Emerson Hospital Friday. Uh, mid-February, they're gonna be able to start holding clinics as well for patients of their primary care physicians. Uh, the Department of Public Health, they, they're gonna try to get from the Department of Public Health one vial of the Pfizer vaccine a week, which is nine hundred and seventy-five doses, so the hospitals are limited too. I mean, for reasons that I don't completely understand, the federal government's not providing the state with as much vaccine as the state has capacity to administer. And what vaccine the state is getting seems to be going to the mass vaccination sites and not out to the towns and not even always out to the primary care physician offices, so it, it, it's just not a great situation.
Yeah, and impossible in terms of planning, for sure.
Yeah, I, I can't plan for anything more than a hundred doses a week at this point.
Yeah, that's tough, really tough.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, uh, Susan, and as always, thank you, because your um, your care for this, this community is is always present, but this is just an unbelievable and unending timeframe, so thank you, thank you. Um, I hope there's a wonderful vacation in Tahiti waiting for you.
I hope so too.
Um, I was just confused because I've also heard from various seniors that some are going to Gillette, some are going to other sites. And um, well, that's not the town's responsibility. It's a confusing morass of information when people call me about it. And I don't know how those directions are getting put forward. Um, do you have any insights in that, or is that simply just a, you know, another path that somebody's found?
So the co, DPH has a COVID webpage, like if you Google DPH COVID vaccine sites, it takes you to a map that's a live map where you can see all the you know, you can figure out what phase you're in, whether you're eligible and, and what sites are available, so people are finding sites. Um, the links to all those webpages are on the town's COVID webpage, and I believe also on the hotline number, I've been working pretty closely with Erin Stevens to update the information as regularly as we can and update the hotline. So people do have choices, I think more and more pharmacies are going to start getting the vaccine. I know a lot of Walgreens, not in Metro West, but in other areas of the state seem to either have the vaccine or are gonna get it soon. Um, so I would recommend that people go to that webpage and keep checking the availability of sites.
Right.
It is really disappointing that there are very few sites in Metro West.
Right, thank you.
And Susan, earlier I did reinforce the notion that um you know, it, it's, we don't have great information, we're not getting a lot of current information, so people really, and, and I think the biggest thing is if there's a senior in your life who has technological challenges, please reach out to try and help them, I mean, I've talked to a number of people who have spent hours helping their senior parents or, you know, family or friends through the state website to register for an appointment, and I, I, I think we all wish it wa, it wasn't like that, you know, I think if we could do it all over again, or we, it wasn't, I think if we could do it, we would do it a little differently, but that's the system that's in place, and so it's not just, you know, it's not just us saying you have to go to the website, if, you know, we're trying to make sure we have, you know, some of our social workers who are available to help seniors, but if you have a senior in your life, please try and help them, that's really the most efficient way for them to get an appointment, and if they're having a hard time with the website.
Yeah, and I will add to that, that when we start holding the clinics at the COA, even though we can only do a hundred doses a week, which we regret, um, all of that will be telephone registration so that people that are not real tech savvy have an opportunity to get registered for the clinic. So that will all be phone-in registration, and when we get those clinics set up, that we'll publicize the phone number at the COA to call.
Very good. Well, keep up your stamina, we're sorry you're having, have to continue to deal with challenges that are just unimaginable, to quite frankly. Um, and uh, hope that we get better news, Terry?
Yes, thank you so much to you and your team, um, just hearing that last comment, Susan, I'm wondering if there's twenty-five hundred Concord seniors of the age of seventy-five. Um, it seems like the telephone operators are gonna be overwhelmed. Um you know, having too many calls at once, um, is, do you have any kind of way to deal with that?
So I think once we've filled a clinic with a hundred people, there will be a voice message that will be put on the line at the COA that says, you know, the clinic is now full, call again next, and, you know, and we'll try to get you into the next clinic. So people at least won't continually keep calling and calling and calling once the clinic is full, but, I mean, I'm
Yes, she's frozen a little bit, but I, I, what she was, I think what she was going to say was, i- it's like the website, once the thing fills up, we don't it, there's no waitlisting or tracking, and people are gonna have to call, and it's like I said, I wish we had a different system, but this is, this is what we have.
Yeah. Well, thank you again to everybody, yeah.
Thank you, Susan, for being here, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um we're gonna move on to um talking about the Patriots Day celebration, huh, uh, hard to fathom doing that on such a snowy day, but here we are. Part of the concern is that we canceled all of these events last year. Clearly, I think the general sentiment is that it's in our best interest to cancel them again this year because there's no way that we're going to have um, majority of people vaccinated. We spoke, when we spoke about this a couple weeks ago, we talked about encouraging um the public celebrations and ceremonies and celebrations committee uh to consider virtual events that were also being considered uh in some surrounding towns. And I, I think the additional challenge we're having is that um Concord's role in the historical significance of celebrating Patriots Day and the, and the associated events um is particularly important that we stay visible not only for the sake of helping to support our business community but also to sort of support our brand, if you will, in this historical space. So I know that um, Julisika, you are already um working on some alternative ways that this can be done, we know you're in progress, so we don't expect you to have a uh, the final uh program here, but do you want to just bring us up to date with what you're thinking about?
Sure, so initially, a lot of the people in our committee, I would say it's kind of split. Um, right now, we have a small committee, so we're still looking for members to be on the committee. But I have received to date app, eight applications confirmed of people that want to participate in the Patriots Day Parade here, you know, in person. I've also, I'm sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and I've also received word that Lexington has completely canceled already this year. They've already moved to a virtual uh Patriots Day, this will be their second year in a row. They have a huge media presence in Lexington, so they had a lot of offerings last year. I actually was looking into that, because I wanted to see how Lexington, I just participated in a meeting last week um, and saying that they've already moved to have certain groups participate, um, including, you know, their Minutemen, the British officers, they have all of these people that want to submit things, and they have um storytellers, they have children's portions. Unfortunately, our committee has not met yet since I've had that meeting, and I'm in email contact with them as to say, hey, this is sort of what Lexington is doing, there are other towns that are also planning on uh participating in the Lexington virtual event. Um, so that's kind of where we're at right now. Now, it, it sounds like we would be able to have great support from the Minuteman um media as well, because they helped out a great deal with our Veterans Day celebration, which was fantastic, that went very well for us. And we're just trying to, we're in talks with them to try to figure out how we can handle doing the dawn salute and make it meaningful for people who cannot, right, as you say, Concord is uh integral um on that Patriots Day Parade, so we would like to be able to do something, but right now we don't have a concrete plan um, other than if we are gonna cancel, then uh I would need to do a lot moving forward in the next couple months to try to solidify a virtual presence, which I think is imperative if we do do that.
Okay, um, thank you for that, and I'm glad you had an opportunity to see what was being done elsewhere, and I, I think, um, I'm interested in I think we do need to zero in fairly quickly here in terms of if we are going to ca, cancel the live events so that Julisika is starting from that uh base and can proceed. I would hope that their Minuteman Media has some previously recorded and recent events that maybe you can draw on uh as, as part of what you could also put together. But I know that um, the list that you generated um showed that there was, you know, opportunities for the library and all different kinds of departments to contribute uh virtually uh for a celebration. So I'd, I'd like to hear some comments from the select board members.
So I'm the liaison to the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee, and I, I was suggesting that we somehow team up with those surrounding towns in their virtual celebrations, that's one of the advantages, if you will, of going virtual is there are really no physical boundaries that we have to respect. Um, and yet we still do need to contribute our own unique content and, and maintain our identity and, and ultimately leadership, I think, in, in this kind of uh celebration, so uh, the other thing, though, that I am most concerned about is not putting it all on Julisika. So she's been working hard trying to do this, but I think that we need to rapidly engage uh other bodies in town that are able to contribute content, and also just as the, the committee meets again, they get the other uh members in, involved, so those are my two biggest concerns as we go, I do think it's a foregone conclusion that the face-to-face aspects of the celebration are to be canceled, and um I, uh, we are on that path to defining what the virtual event would be.
Okay, other comments or? Susan?
Um, yeah, just uh occurred to me that and I think this institution was on the list, would be the museum, because I believe they've just opened a, a new room with an April nineteenth exhibit, and they, and they certainly have the collection to uh help do a lot of explaining about what happened on that day here in Concord, so I, I'm just throwing that out as what I would consider a key um participant in this effort.
Right, good. Um, any other comments or questions? Well, I think um generally, we, we do need to officially pass a uh, um, resolution saying that we will not have actual gathering for the Patriots Day of parade and associated events. So Susan, I would entertain a motion.
Jane has been asking to be recognized, by the way.
Okay, thank you, Jane, sorry.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, uh, first of all, I wanted to second Matt's concern for Julisika and the responsibilities where uh I'm suspecting we're about to place on her shoulders. And since a, a later conversation in the, are actually shortly thereafter is acknowledging the upcoming um semi-quinsen, centennial celebration.
semi-quins- centennial celebration. I think we might want to think about, um, a role for some of the, those who will be involved in that in, in terms of helping think about Patriots Day. I'm just trying to imagine a small, a group that could be focused on what does Concord Virtual Patriots Day look like? What's the script? Since it will not be a long procession. So how do you, how do you capture that feeling? Um, in a, um, in a virtual meeting. Um, and I guess I would, I would look to Julisika, you and to, to Matt to sort of say, you know, how can we support this? What can we do? Um, and you know, is that a subcommittee? Is that a, you know?
So is it, is it a good thought, Jane? Is there a possibility for a joint meeting between the PCC and the Historical Commission as an example? That could serve as a brainstorming, uh, meeting or?
I think it'd be a great idea. I think that was obviously I was going to state for the next, um, three discussions, I think, to try to figure out because I think one, when we're moving into, I, I wanted to just talk about the Patriots Day. But if we're moving into Patriots Day, one thing that would be helpful is if we had, um, certain people on the committee who could help with, like the Children's UCM, the Library, Concord Rec, as I mentioned in, in my list, just to kind of get the overall age groups of everyone. So that includes the COA and it includes everybody. So we have a representation of the entire town. It's not just the Don Salute and not just the cannons firing and not just a cemetery, you know, cemetery something. So, um, but like I said, this would be, I would need to talk to a lot of people and try to get everybody on one page in a really condensed short period of time. Um, and right now this, like I said, the Celebrations Committee, we have four active members and we're supposed to have seven. So I ask a lot of our people, um, to talk to more than a fair share of what they need to do. Um, and that includes myself too, because there's one of me and one of Matt, who's our liaison. So I'm trying to figure that out. Um, and it does help that Lexington, although they do have a new chair, um, the person that I usually liaison with, she's like, ah, I'm lost because this is something that's out of my purview. It's out of my wheelhouse. So this is a lot also to do with the social media or the media aspect, which is why, you know, hopefully talking to the Minuteman Media, um, they'll be able to help us out as well because they did a great job for Veterans Day. So that's how I envision. So it's a lot of overarching umbrella, everybody on the same page, and then branching out kind of like wheel spokes and in developing one cohesive message. So overall topic.
It occurs to me that this might be a great opportunity, um, for the Town Manager's Office to, um, to support. Especially because Stephen, you have not had the, the incredible opportunity to see, to, to actually participate in, in Patriots Day as our Town Manager. Um, and it really is one of those unique events. Um, and for those, you know, that many in Concord have multiple pathways of experience with Patriots Day and as Julisika is, is identifying. So finding a way to vignette all of those components into a, you know, I'm, I'm imagining a, you know, a march of vignettes instead of a march of people.
Right.
But again, that's a, that's, this goes way beyond the charge of the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee. Um, and, and sort of is a cross-media, cross, cross-subject discussion. But I also think that perhaps coming out of that effort may be some insights into ways to approach our, our sesqua, and our semi-quins- centennial celebration. I don't, I don't want to conflate the two, but there may be, you know, this may be an opportunity to look at some of the ways we package things.
And a quick, and building on that, Jane, because a, a quick way for Julisika to, um, get on everyone's radar might be to get to the senior management team. And so the librarian could say, here's what we can do, here's, you know, et cetera.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. In fact, it, earlier when Jane, you asked about what does a virtual thing look like? Um, for last Patriots Day, MMN did end up digging out and running on loop um, footage from ancient raids, going back to 19 teens, I think, in 1930s. And so, and that was really done on the short hop. And so now that we think we have a little more time to plan, I think you're right. It's, you know, it, it's, you know, whether it's live streaming, you know, the, the, um, the, the, the Concord Independent Battery doing their thing at, at, at dawn, where we don't want, it's a not, it's not a public event. But the Independent Battery still may do their tradition and we, and people can watch it via live stream. Um, things like that, that we think we can do safely and still comport with the governor's guidance. And so I, I don't think Juliska, I don't think you and I have met, but certainly, um, you know, we, I, I agree, Jane. I think this is something that, that Town Manager's Office um, can be very helpful in, um, coming up with some ideas and, and marshalling some, uh, resources, you know, human or otherwise.
That'd be fantastic. I think one thing that you kind of missed though on the Don Salute is, you know, you have the bells ringing at First Parish and then you have the Don Salute and you have the horse, you know, with the hooves coming out the Old North Bridge. So, I mean, those are, that's just the Don Salute. You know, so that, that's starting at 5:30 in the morning. At six o'clock, you hear the six o'clock bells. So that's pretty incredible. You know, and if we can capture that and then move into the day, I, I, I think there's a huge potential for this.
I don't have to be there for that part, do I?
Absolutely. Get, get on his calendar immediately. It would be like.
I, Jane, it, it, honestly, the one, my one takeaway from watching the, the footage was it is a huge deal here and I do, it is kind of a missed, I do say regret, but it is unfortunate that it, it's not my second Patriots Day and we're not going to really be able to, to do that. So um, I think we have a very talented and clever team. I think we can come up with something that, that touches the bases without um, touching the, the, you know, the edges, so to speak.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So Julisika, when is your next PCC meeting?
So we have a few actually, um, coming up actually this week and next week. So talking about that, but I'll create an agenda item for us to be able to do.
We'll get, get on the Town Manager's calendar ASAP and you, you heard the offer there. So that's great.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Stephen.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so I would, I, I think that, as Matt said, you know, it's foregone conclusion that we need to restrict the in-person activities. So I would entertain a motion.
Move to cancel the 2021 Don Salute Miriam's Corner Exercise in Patriots Day Parade.
Okay, so you just included the Don Salute. It, um, Julisika, if I understood you correctly, you're thinking that that's one activity that could stay alive?
It, it's a potential for it to stay alive. I'd prefer if I can talk to our team about that, but definitely Miriam's Corner and definitely the Patriots Day because that's generally a lot more people.
Okay, thank you.
I can amend that motion to say move to cancel the 2021 Miriam's Corner Exercise and Patriots Day Parade.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, will the clerk please call the?
Well, I, I just, from a discussion point of view, I just wonder if, if I read the headline for this motion, it would be Select Board cancels Patriots Day. I mean, is there any way to sort of say that we're moving it to a virtual event? I mean, to kind of make it clear that we're not just wiping the whole thing out? Um, so that, that's just, I don't know. I, I understand from a hey, procedural point of view, we need to make sure that that parade doesn't happen, but I just also want to make sure that we're still on the map.
I, I guess maybe one suggestion I would say is maybe make all commemorations will be virtual this year rather than canceling.
Yeah.
Because we're going to try to ju- just so it's a little, you know, that way we can encompass large groups and limit those and we can talk to the people about that, but that all commemorations will be virtual. So it doesn't.
Is that okay to add to the motion?
Sorry, thank you.
Sure. Um. Should I just move that all Patriots Day events 2021 will be virtual?
Yes.
Is that okay for you, your purposes, Linda? You're on mute.
Um, no, um. I think, I think that will cover it.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I'm not sure that, that, have we made the decision about the Don Salute? Because that would be included in Patriots Day.
Uh, but it would be virtual. I mean, in that, I, somebody actually has to fire a weapon, but the, it's the commemoration, the celebration aspect is a virtual celebration.
I, I, like I said, I think, I, I think it's, it's canceling public events.
Maybe that's what it means.
Yeah, that, that's really what we're doing is we're canceling.
All commemorations virtual. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need a different motion?
I, I think, yeah, both components would be helpful, I think.
Okay. Um. Move to cancel the in-person Patriots Day events, public events, as all events for Patriots Day will be virtual. Does that do it?
Yes, I, I think that's good enough.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zachman?
Aye.
Hachkis?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, uh, that's unanimous and the chair so declares. Julisika, um, thank you for taking this on and thank you for being open to um, some of the suggestions and get to the Town Manager.
Definitely will. Thank you so much, Linda.
All right, thank you. All right. Well, staying on the patriotic theme, um, we have, um, Mike Lawson here today, who initially initiated the conversation last year with the Select Board just before COVID hit, um, regarding the semi-quins- centennial celebration coming up. And today specifically, uh, he is here to speak about, uh, a request for commemorative stamps for the 250th celebration. Um, so Mike, welcome.
Hello, good morning. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Well, um, uh, as Linda indicated, we've had begun to start thinking about celebrations for 2025 and 2026. And, uh, we had met, a group of folks had met, uh, to try to get the ball rolling. And that led sort of to your next item on the agenda, which is a committee charge for the Celebration Committee. Uh, one of the things that was discussed was, uh, petitioning the Postal Service to issue commemorative stamps to celebrate the event. And it's on your agenda today, uh, because there's a very long lead time getting that done. It's a minimum of three years. And so what you have is a letter that's drafted on behalf of the chairs of the Select Board in Lexington, Concord and Lincoln. Uh, and the proposal is that there would be a stamp to commemorate the Battle at Lexington Green, a stamp to commemorate Paul Revere's capture, and a stamp to commemorate the shot heard around the world at the Old North Bridge. And so that's the request and similar requests before the Select Boards in Lincoln and Lexington.
So thank you, Mike. Um, I failed to note that we have an expert philatelist among us, meaning Mike. And, um, so we appreciate him taking some leadership and drafting this letter as well as his willingness to um, move this forward, uh, if we so authorize. So comments from the Select Board.
Thank you, Mike, for, for taking the lead on this. We appreciate it.
Sure. I might add also that, um, when things settle down in the Congress, I'll be talking to Laurie Trahan who have a proposal to create some commemorative coins to celebrate the event as well. And that, that's a congressional activity, uh, but, uh, she's a little busy these days.
I noticed in the material that we were sent about the, um, 1975 celebration that there were coins, commemorative coins.
There were coins and there were commemorative stamp. And in, uh, 1925, uh, there was also a series of stamps to commemorate the events of the day. So it's something Postal Service has historically done in milestone events or milestone years. And I would expect that they would be interested in doing this again for, uh, 2025.
Sounds like they're willing to repeat that for, for the significant years.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes, that's part of, part of their procedure.
Okay. Any other comments from the Select Board? If not, it's Terry, sorry.
Yeah, these, um, thanks for taking the lead on these, Mike. Um, I think both the stamps and the coins are really good ideas. You are working on this.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, if there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion.
Move to authorize the Chair to send a letter to the Citizen Stamp Advisory Committee requesting commemorative stamps for the 250th anniversary of the Battle, Battle of Lexington and Concord.
Second.
Okay. I'm wondering if we want to amend that a bit and just say, um, move to authorize the Chair to sign, uh, the letter, um, as described, uh, and ask Mike Lawson to submit and follow through.
Okay, uh, move to authorize the letter, a letter, the Chair to sign a letter as described, uh, to be submitted by Mike Lawson to the Citizen Stamp Advisory Committee requesting a commemorative, commemorative stamps for the 250th anniversary of the Battle of Lexington and Concord.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, which, um, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hachkis?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
It's unanimous and the chair so declares. Mike, um, I assume you are going to walk this through with Lexington and Lincoln as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, with our gratitude for drafting the letter and to seeing it through its conclusion.
Um, may I also make another, a quick remark, uh, listening to your deliberations about the April, uh, events. Uh, I think it would be wise to quickly coordinate with the Superintendent of the National Park uh, to see what is planned from that activity and to get, to get him on board.
Okay, I see Julisika is still on the line, so hopefully she heard that.
And, and Mike, this, this raises my, my only question to you, which is, um, as you're forming this, this effort and, and engaging, have you also reached out to the Public Ceremonies and, and Celebrations Committee for their input?
Uh, not yet. Um, I did meet with the then-Chair, um, John Arena to tell him that we were beginning to think about this and that there would certainly be a role for that committee. But as was the case, uh, in, uh, 1975, there was a separate committee, a whole series of committees set up to manage the, the events to celebrate the 100th anniversary or 200th anniversary, excuse me. So they know they'll be a part of it, but the exact role that committee would play, uh, I think is yet to be determined and will probably be moved forward as you folks, uh, deliberate on the committee charge for the Celebration Committee.
So having said that, Mike, I hope you're going to be able to stay on the line for a little while longer as we move on to our next agenda item.
If you'd like me to, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. That would be great. So our next agenda item is, um, is a segue here to review the semi-quins- centennial Celebration Committee charge. Again, um, our thanks to Mike Lawson, who originally had drafted this uh, in 2020 just be, and presented it to the Select Board initially just before COVID-19. Um, I, in our packets today, I took the liberty of adding a few additional comments and, and questions. Let me say first, and, and, um, others can add to this as they would like. Um, there are, the semi-quins- There are, the semi-quintcentennial 2025, or sometimes referred to as 2026, refers to a series of events that are going to, uh, related to, uh, between, um, 2024 and 2026, uh, leading up to the Declaration of Independence. That's sort of the general nomenclature that refers to all of this at the, um, national level. The Rev 250 refers to the state, um, activities, which, um, more specifically, uh, focus on the 20, uh, 2025 year, but also cover, uh, events, uh, between '24 and '26. So that's another thing we heard, uh, we are already hearing about and that the information for that is housed at the Mass Historical Commission. The Battle Road 2025, um, Committee is representatives from the surrounding towns, our sister towns, Bedford, Lincoln, um, all the way out to Arlington. Um, probably Hanscom is on that committee, uh, Concord. And both Mike and I have, um, attended a couple of the preliminary meetings for that committee. So that's another effort. When, um, in what we're considering today is the Concord 2025 Executive Committee, Draft Number Two, and that's what Mike originally brought to us, um, last year in 2020. And as he's pointed out previously, this is meant to be an overarching coordinating committee. We need some, uh, we, we need an array of talent. We need an array of resources and we need people who are, quite frankly, um, community influencers, because it may or may not include some fundraising activities as well as reaching out to a, a, a number of external resources, um, to make all the events happen. As in 7075, you could see from the material that we just got, um, unearthed from the archive, uh, as recent as today, um, there were multiple, multiple committees and subcommittees of this executive committee and also, um, a role for the PCC. So, uh, there's plenty of opportunity for literally hundreds of people probably to be involved in this, um, so that we're, uh, coming up with activities and events that will reach all segments of our society or, and, um, give opportunity for people to engage and participate. So Mike, would you like to add anything else, uh, by way of introduction before we open it up to Select Board discussion?
Um, well, I would just re- remind, uh, the committee that, and I had spoken to you folks before. I had been meeting and I asked Linda to join me most recently with representatives from the area towns. And we plan to continue to meet, but the capacity in which we'll be meeting is simply coordinating. So bringing information to Concord, to Lexington and Arlington. And as Linda mentioned, we have a representative from Massport, also representative from the Air Force Base. But that's just meant to help us get coordinated. I also, uh, last year met with, um, a group of citizens in town, Tom Putnam, who is the Director of the Museum, Melissa Sawfield, uh, Carol Wilson, and BJ Dunn, who is the Superintendent of the National Park, to begin to brainstorm about things that the town might do. And we, uh, have not met since last year. Uh, we'll, we'll try to meet again, but hopefully, once you get your committee charge squared away, that, that little just ad hoc group will simply, uh, go away. So I don't really have a lot to add. I'm, I'm very hopeful that you'll get this draft done and we'll be able to find some very active citizens to participate in this committee, because it is going to take a lot of work. And, um, you will recall that in 1975, the President of the United States was here. And it's very likely that, uh, the President will be invited again. Uh, we've had conversations with the British consulate about somebody representing, uh, England, uh, United Kingdom to participate. So this does have the potential to be a rather significant event. So I think the earliest we get going on this, the better we're going to be able to deal with all of the complexities that an event like this is liable to entail.
Thank you. And the other, um, thing I would comment on that is that every town is setting up their own committee or commission, uh, similar to what we're considering right now, uh, for the Executive Committee or, or top-level coordinating committee.
That's correct. And in fact, the document that you have, Linda, was, uh, uh, helped substantially by the charge of the committee, uh, in Lexington. Susie Berry, member of the Select Board there, provided me with that information, which I tried to then recraft as our own.
Very good. Jane?
Um, one thing that occurs to me that, um, other than, uh, obviously needing to coordinate with the, um, the relevant committees in town, but that, uh, your comment about the dignitaries and, uh, political leadership that will likely attend or could very likely attend. And just the, um, unfortunately, where we have, have gone with, um, in recent history with large gatherings, it seems to me that, that a public safety representative should be involved from the start, thinking through, um, any of the, you know, thinking, thinking through the public safety, uh, and support, uh, responsibilities.
Okay. Yeah, as you say, it's unfortunate, uh, that we have to think about that on the front end as opposed to later, at a later point.
It, it was a serious issue in 1975, so it proves us to be aware of it now.
It's a funny cyclical thing, then.
Yeah. Um, so are we commenting now about the charge or?
We are. We are.
Okay. Um, so a, a couple of comments that I had on the charge. Um, the first is, I do think that that addition about identifying funding, but it should say identify, not identity, but, um, is a key point. Um, I also wonder, because in 1975, uh, there was some sponsorship, town sponsorship of, you know, arts, uh, they, they sponsored a play, you know, there was a contest, uh, that, uh, also it seems to me that we're, this is an opportunity to kind of reassess the historical position of this event, you know, and update that. I just wonder, to what degree is the town going to try to, through scholarship and the arts, uh, to try to do a contemporary rendering, you know? And it takes significant lead time, uh, to make that happen. Uh, it, I don't see that aspect in, in this charge. Now, I realize that what, you know, I do see the memorial that's being proposed, but I, I think there were other, you know, there are other dimensions to this. And I, I realize it'll evolve over time, that we will probably amend this charge as we identify new things. But I, I would hope that at the outset, that that aspect would be something that we would consider to be in scope.
Linda, so Mike, could I comment on that?
Yeah, please.
Uh, Matt makes a very good point. Uh, this, this committee that I spoke to you about, ad hoc one, with, uh, Carol Wilson, BJ Dunn and Melissa and Tom Putnam. After that, we, um, I met with Jerry Wedge from the Umbrella. And, uh, I met with the Director of 51 Walden. In the spirit of what Matt is talking about, 51 Walden is anticipated or did at the time that they would do the play 1776. Uh, Jerry Wedge through the Umbrella was taking on the task of assembling artists to do some, perhaps some kind of memorial. And Melissa Sawfield was very interested in, uh, having a, a poem contest. So there are a, a lot of the major, and Tom Putnam, of course, as Linda already indicated in Chair's remarks, at least I think it was Linda, that the museum has unveiled a, uh, new, new exhibit and, uh, that would certainly be an important component to, uh, the historical events of, uh, April 19th. So again, that's a reason to get started, so that we can get all of these organizations in town. And you have to think about the importance of involving the schools and so the children can participate in, in a particular way. So Matt's point is a very good one.
Yes.
And I know that there are also historical books that are being reissued or new ones written, of course, and a number of them. But if we had some sort of symposium or, you know, in the, in the whole spirit of the Concord Lyceum, you know, is, is there something that we could do to kind of create that?
We, we had also, um, together with the Historical Society, there's a whole list of significant events that predated the activities here in town. And the idea with our own public library is to identify some of those events and to have some kind of historical symposium associated with it. So that rather than thinking about, instead of events that would take place on April 19th or thereabouts, we'd be thinking about events that could begin, uh, two or three years ahead of time with a lecture or symposium. So, uh, again, the point's well taken and, uh, this, this, the importance is to get this beginning, because it's going to be an evolutionary committee as it thinks about all of the various ways we can celebrate our 250th anniversary.
Yeah, I mean, starting in next year or the year after, you could almost have a daily update of 250 years ago today. I mean, a lot, a lot was happening.
Indeed.
Yeah.
Linda?
So, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Um, so Matt, to your, to your comment about, um, the town, sometimes we say that it's, is it, um, um, big T or small t town? Uh, and, and so I think one of the things we've been doing is we have been setting aside $10,000 for the past two years, um, in our budget for this purpose. So rather than have a, a big budgetary impact in one year, you know, you know, say next year, we're squirreling money away and then out of the general fund budget for supporting the, these events. Um, and we will continue to do that. And I'm sure that that'll be ramped up a little bit as well. So as a part of the committee's charge, it says identify funding and the needs and a plan for both public and private funding. We're kind of, we're, you know, knowing that this was coming, we've tried to get ahead of that.
So Matt, Matt, back to your point about the, um, you, you know, how the historical position of, of, the, the position of historical events, um, in, in terms of how it's viewed in contemporary times. I mean, I, I think important also to Rev 250 for the state is how all of these events, uh, right up to the future, uh, uh, to the present, are resonating with citizens in this day and age. And I think some of, some of that, um, will be, um, folded into some of this various subcommittees that get generated out of this committee. Um, and whether it be school, you know, involving the schools or whether it's, it's looking at more, um, historical standing kind of positions here. And so I, I, I think some of that, some of that thinking should probably cap, be captured in the charge as well. But also, I think certainly will be reflected in the membership that we bring on, bring in. So that's coming, looking at specifically the categories of membership that we go after is, is critical to this effort.
And Linda, um, one other quick point, um, related to Matt, um, commenting about the arts. I think we have a lot of talented people in the two, um, cultural district committees who, um, Mike wanted to think of some events or, or, um...
Yeah, clearly that, that would probably, they'd all get brought in, um,
Right.
under the arts section of this, you know?
Right. And that would also help on the, um, put Concord on the map for, and helping with, um, economic vitality in the future.
Yeah, good point, good point. But, you know, yeah, so all of this is, you know, I can just, when Mike mentioned that there were a proliferation of subcommittees, you know, that's where all of this gets pulled in, probably. Any other comments from the Select Board? And then I see Julisika scatter, hand up. Oh, Julisika, go ahead.
Uh, no, it's, uh, Linda.
I think both Jane and Susan have something as well.
Okay, sorry, go ahead. Yep.
You can go, Jane.
Um, I was just going to also wave a flag at the agricultural interests, since so many of those who, who participate, um, the, the individuals who took place in this historic event, um, way, 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 way back then, mo- most of them came from, uh, farming situations. So I don't have a specific commemorative item. I don't, you know, I don't know whether we're going to name a squash, but I think that, um, we should think about something that identifies, um, the agricultural, um, uh, base, especially since we are thinking about, you know, some of the economic and, um, some of the things that, that make it so conquered.
Yeah, a good point. Good point. Jane, Susan, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I jumped to something on the second page, which I think we have to talk about pretty early on, and that is dual committee appointments. As we know, I had two committees this week that reported a need for an additional member, because people moved out of town. And it's a, it's a ongoing thing for the town to, to have fully staffed committees. And I, I understand from, yeah, looking at the material from 1975, that there could be a few hundred people involved. So I think we have to have some discussion about whether people can participate in this as a, an ad hoc, um, committee and project, because it's a time limited, or I, I'm not sure. I just think that we have to be cognizant of that and that we have a lot of, we, we, um, ask a lot of citizens in terms of participation. And I think we need to, to be clear about that in the beginning.
Yeah, I agree. I, um, one of the reasons I added this as a question, because I think it's key to where we find ourselves in terms of, um, community participation here. Um, I would hope, yeah, Matt, go ahead.
Uh, when I look at the membership, of course, we have this trade-off between being comprehensive and being light-footed. You know, for an executive committee, you really want to, I mean, 13 to 15 is a big number of people, uh, to bring together. And, and I just wonder if in an executive committee, we, we should limit the numbers there and, and realize that we may not be fully comprehensive, but that in the subcommittees, we would have representation of the whole gamut. And that would also take some of the pressure off of the, the, this dual, um, membership requirement. Uh, the, the other comment, which is while I got the floor, is when I looked at that item where the community members with a background in history and event planning and door logistics, those seem like distinct, uh, skills. I doubt if you find those all wrapped up in an individual. So I would just make it one representative each and, and split that out. Event planning and logistics for one and history for the other. Both, I think, pretty essential.
Yeah. I think we originally started out with nine to 11, looking at nine to 11 on the executive committee.
I mean, like, you might just need one fundraising czar on the committee and then a fundraising subcommittee, you know what I mean?
Yep.
So the other thing I'd say about fundraising is usually it's a friends of group that does that instead of a public committee.
Well, there's both kinds, I think. There's, you know, getting grants, um, but the town staff may lead that.
Yep. Other comments or Julisika?
Okay, thank you. I, I noticed that, um, considering it's, it is April 19th and it is, um, in 2025, it'd be great to have someone from the Public Ceremonies Committee, um, somewhere and this representation, because it's not actually in the document. But to have a representative on this committee would be great.
And we already know there are problems with, um, Patriots Day, the date in 2025, conflicting with Easter and, uh, I think Passover. And there's just a whole
Exactly.
challenge that the committee's going to have there. Okay.
So that would just be my, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments? All right, um, we'll go back to the drawing board. I have some things to work with, um, and we'll come back to this as quickly as we can. and we'll come back to this as quickly as we can uh, because we do really need to get this off the ground. So if you have any other, um, comments that come to you after this meeting, please shoot them to Jeremy and he'll aggregate them.
Linda, if I could make one final quick comment. I would, uh, I'd sound a little unusual, but not try to get, make sure you get it too perfect. I think mostly get it going and have a clause in the charge that the committee could come back to the select board as it begins its work with amendments to its charge or composition as they see fit. So that, uh, I think trying to resolve all of these very complex and important questions, you know, might, might delay this for quite a while. If we could get it off the ground with most of it underway, I think it would be helpful.
Yep, thank you. That's a good recommendation. All right, um, I think we've covered as much as we can there today. And as I said, we'll try to get this back to the select board as quickly as we can. Are there any committee nominations? Thank you, Mike, again. Committee nominations.
No, we have committee appointments.
Okay, committee appointments.
Move to appoint Joseph Rogers of 20 Tracy Street to the Agricultural Committee as an associate member for a term to expire April 30th, 2022.
Okay, is there a second? Okay.
Second.
Okay, um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miss Base?
It's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Uh, and thank you, Mr. Rogers, for stepping in for this committee. All right, um, I'm ready for committee liaison reports. And again, please make them as useful as possible as you always do. Thank you. Who would like to go first? Uh, Susan. She hasn't broken her record here.
Well, I had five meetings to report on that I had last week. Planning Board met on the 26th and, um, they had, the beginning of the meeting was a joint meeting with the Concord Housing Authority, the CHDC, uh, Concord Housing Foundation and the Regional Housing Services Office, which is a really productive and interesting meeting for all of these stakeholders to be able to, uh, talk about where, where they intersect in common goals and how they can support each other. So that was very helpful. Um, the other main topic of the meeting was discussing potential, um, articles for the warrant. And they include, uh, two-family housing and residency, which is, was something that was, uh, going to be on last year's agenda, but was withheld because of the circumstances of last year's town meeting. Uh, floodplain conservancy, conservancy, sorry, district and the groundwater, separate groundwater conservancy district. Looking at the earth removal bylaw and the, uh, floor area ratio bylaw and the tree preservation bylaw. And they have different committee where, uh, members are working on each of these. So these, these are all in process and whether they actually be turned into warrant articles, uh, remains to be seen. But these are the areas that they're working on. Um, the Council on Aging met on the 28th. And, uh, a major part of that meeting was Gary Kleiman presented the NMI StarMet reuse planning committee report, which was very helpful. And the other, um, piece that is noteworthy about the COA, first they need a full member and two associate members, but they have developed a quite a liaison, um, network of members who report on the CHA disability conquered after 60, um, CHDC and a number of committees where there's interface. So that, I, that, um, reflects what we are kind of non-silo communication that was expressed in the long-range plan. So that it's nice to see that. It's, they're not the only committee doing that, but, um, they have a pretty robust group. Trails Committee met and also there was a, um, presentation there by Paul Bohm on the NMI StarMet. And I'm, it's really, I'm really happy to see that they're spending a lot of time reaching out to specific groups on this important decision that we'll be facing in the near future. They also talked about the Battle Road, Rogue Farmhouse Connector Trail Update and, um, the, the upcoming Trail Guide. Uh, Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee met on the 26th. And they, it was a fairly routine meeting. They discussed the, um, conservation restrictions in certain particular properties, who's following them, following up. And they spend a lot of time, there's a new GIS monitoring. There's a technical piece that, that's kind of new that they're wanting to get their, get trained on so they can, that's more effective and precise at gathering information that they do on their field visits. Uh, Personnel Board met on the 26th and they continued their discussion about, um, the role of the Personnel Board. And they spent some time, um, talking about, um, what the, in, where the sources of input should be for their role. And also, uh, discuss trying to gather information from other towns that have a strong town manager form of government, uh, along with the Personnel Board. And whether to do that by means of a study, but it seems that there's in-house committee people that would be able to gather information. And that discussion also will be continued. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to go next?
I've got a really fast one. So the Recreation Commission was postponed last week, so I didn't have that meeting. There was a special meeting of the Housing Authority to approve some spending on renovations. And then I was just the, a special guest star on the Planning Board last week, commenting on the floor ratio and how we got to where we are today.
Okay, good. Jane, thank you, Matt.
I had, uh, two meetings, uh, this past week and ironically at the exact same time. So I had dueling laptops open, which means that I tried to cover both. I can't, I, I say in advance, if any of the committee members of the White Pond Advisory Committee or the, uh, Climate Action Advisory, uh, uh, Board are listening, they'll note that I missed something because there's no way I was, I was present for both. The Climate Action Advisory Board, um, discussed, as I know that, um, Linda knows, uh, coming on, getting onto the agenda in the future with the Select Board, uh, specifically to do with the, the non-binding resolution that we've discussed previously and, and moving that back forward with the Select Board, uh, to, to promote it into the, the legislature for this, this year. And then, um, retooling, uh, former warrant article number, uh, 40, uh, for this year's, uh, town meeting. And, um, I assume that we will, that Linda, you'll be working with, um, with, uh, the Chair Jake on when those, those two items can come onto an agenda. They were of the mind that our, uh, the warrant was opening a lot faster than it actually is. So there, the goal would be simply to get, be ready for the town preview, preview discussion. And then the other, uh, it was a full agenda as it always is. And given my background in energy, it was, I always enjoy it. But the other point of, of real note was the discussion on, um, the, uh, our municipal light plant's presentation on decarbonization. Um, specifically with the inquiry and discussion over the 40% nuclear that comes in to meet our goals. Now, I won't, I won't bother the committee, although I'll wait until I'm off and then come back and, and do exactly that, uh, as to why that makes sense. But it, it was worth noting that that, that was, that was, uh, that caught everybody's attention. And I don't think the conversation is finished by any means. And it obviously points out to a, a need to understand more about how we're going to, you know, how we meet our goals in a, with some kind of price surety that keeps, um, Concord residents, from, um, facing or, or the light plant from, from being concerned about a, uh, rate increase. The White Pond Advisory Committee spent a lot of time talking about, talking with Jerry Frankel, the former Chair, who shared his comprehensive vision for White Pond, its watershedage neighborhoods. Uh, ironically, that was done in 2015, which seems like a long time ago now. They are looking to update it with specific, um, new data. And so there was a discussion of, you know, assigning people to collecting and, and, um, offer and, and, um, and producing that, that data for an update. And I think that would be, um, useful to everyone. And then there was a discussion on the, uh, about the, the recent Commission on Disabilities meeting and the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Meetings, um, obviously both impacting the pond. One for the, um, the, uh, current planning process that was delayed today uh, or delayed from tomorrow. But then the new White Pond, uh, public hearing, or public meeting on, uh, on improvements at the beach, uh, has been moved to the ninth at six. So instead of tomorrow at six, it's the ninth. So that'll give, uh, the, the advisory committee a little bit more time to collect their thoughts, I, I assume. And also, um, to Terry's point, publicize it. And with that, I think, uh, I've covered all of my, uh, my committees.
Okay, thanks very much, Jane. On the 25th, there was a caucus like no, it seems so long ago, but there was a outdoor caucus like no other that conquered a scene. Uh, but it was successful thanks to everyone who pulled that off. I met with the trustees of donations and they were actually can, um, spent some time delivering, deliberating on their charge, because they were asked to consider actually an expansion of the charge, which none of the committee members felt, um, ready to proceed on. Uh, so that was an interesting discussion. And then, um, I'm also met with the Tax Fairness Committee. And as I reported earlier in the meeting, um, since that meeting, the senior, um, means tested exemption, uh, tax exemption has been filed in this new legislative session, which, um, is a relief to everyone now if we can just keep it moving uh, through the legislative process so that there won't be a gap. But, um, in terms of those individuals who are taking advantage and need this kind of assistance. The committee also, um, had a generous, um, received a generous assurance, um, from a member of our community to, um, guarantee that funds would be available should there be a gap so that at least there would be an additional year, um, for applicant, applicants to receive this assistance. So that's amazing. So that was the big news at the Tax Fairness Committee meeting. And that concludes my committee report for this week. Okay, um, I think we've, everyone's had a chance to report. Terry, did you report?
No, um, actually I did, some of my meetings were canceled. They're going to be held this week, so I didn't have anything. But yeah, tomorrow night I have three at the same time, so.
Good luck.
Go laptops, yep.
All right, good luck. Uh, there was no additional miscellaneous correspondence. Um, are there any public comments?
Hello?
Tanya?
Hi. Yes, about the.
Sorry, Tanya, would you just state your name?
62 Prescott Road, Tanya Galus. About the 250th celebrations committee, um, two comments. Oh, one, um, is an artist. I think, I think it is wonderful to acknowledge the importance of the arts and the, uh, and the contributions of artistic projects. And if, if the, uh, I was going to suggest before that if, if the, if the committee size does remain 13 to 15, that perhaps there should be two people representing the arts communities because they, there are so many varied approaches, um, to the arts and the artistic approaches. And, and, you know, one is to put the historical and, um, present day context. Another might be to put the historical and international context. I mean, there are, and there are all the different media. So anyway, I'm just saying that as someone who has been in the arts all, all her life. The other thing I, I thought of was, um, perhaps to, at some point, whether in the committee, maybe in, in the committee, to include, uh, some kind of expertise on the Native American, um, residents, uh, both at the time and now and its continuity, just to keep that in mind. I'm sure, uh, many of the historical experts already know about some of that. Uh, but just to kind of highlight that element too. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Susan?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about correspondence. And I wondered, I just wanted to mention, uh, the very thoughtful and, um, thought-provoking letters that we all received from the Willard students in the past week. And I wondered what, um, are we going to have a discussion at a meeting or how are we going to, um, address that, address those suggestions and concerns?
So, um, we're not going to do that this evening. Thank you for mentioning that. And, um, let me catch up with the Town Manager's Office and, uh, and take it under consideration for our next select board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. All right. With that, I'd like to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session with respect to non-union contract negotiations for the town manager. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town and the Chair so declares. So, so do I hear a motion?
Um, I think there's a raised, uh, a raised hand in, from the public.
I'm sorry, Pamela? Pamela Dritt, sorry, I didn't see your hand for, previously.
No problem. Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green, Unit Four.
Okay.
Two quick questions. One is can we continue to have town meetings, board meetings like this, uh, attendable virtually even after the pandemic? It's really been nice to have, be able to become involved in town government for a lot more people.
So thank you for that comment. And I know it's one that's being discussed across the state and some of that will be up to state regulation.
And the other question is, could you please make some of like the packet information public by posting links into the agenda on the websites like the zoning boards do? I think it would be incredibly helpful to us and the general public and would save you from a lot of uninformed questions.
Okay, thank you for your comment. All right, thank you. Okay. So, um, let me repeat it however, uh, just so there's, yeah, thank you. See no other hands here. I'm going to adjourn to executive session and, uh, will now adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session with respect to non-union contract negotiations for the town manager. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. And, okay, and so I would consider a motion to that effect?
Move to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session with respect to non-union contract negotiations for the town manager. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town and the Chair so declares.
Second.
Okay, will a clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Yeah, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. So we will log off and then log into our executive session as quickly as we can. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.